Council meeting, and I ask those who would like to join myself in the city council, my two allegiance, please stand.
I am the allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with number ten just as our all.
First order of business is audience comments. Citizens' comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions that we make. Anyone from the public who desires to comment will have the opportunity to do so. Recognized, please come to the lectern by the screen, state your name, address, and relationship to the city, and speak into the microphone. Please limit your comments to five minutes, and if you have written comments, you can submit those to the city clerk. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Speaker is out of order, I will direct the speaker to return to his or her seat. Speaker does not comply, I will ask him or her to leave the council chambers. Again, citizens' comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process. We take them seriously, and we thank members of the public for taking the time to address us during our meetings. Point out that this evening, we have a public hearing scheduled to discuss annexation of Lake Samamish State Park, and if you would like to speak on that topic, you should wait until that public hearing to speak. And with that, is there anyone who has signed up to speak on any topic other than Lake Samamish State Park annexation?
There are none.
Is there anyone in the audience desiring to speak during audience comments this evening? Anyone who has not signed up who desires to speak? Third and final call, anyone desiring to speak this evening during audience comments? Seeing none, then, audience comments are closed, and we will move to committee and regional reports, beginning with council member Mary Lou Pollin.
No report.
And council member Tola Marks.
Mr. Mayor, Land and Shore met last Tuesday, number nine. We, in regards to Agenda Bill 6904, which is the city's walk and roll action strategy, the committee liked what it heard and recommended it unanimously back up for full council approval. We also got an update on the public lands inventory, where things were at, got to take a look at the app and ask some questions and give some feedback on where we'd like to next with that process. And then finally got an update, a DSD quarterly update, as to their calendar and what will be seen for and what DSD coming forward over the next couple quarters. And the next night had SCA pick, and in regards to the two issues that we discussed here in Go to the Order a couple weeks ago, the body did approve unanimously a recommendation to the board, to the SCA board, taking a position, looking for a more sustainable public health funding, perhaps to include tax on e-cigarettes and vaping devices. And then I faithfully transmitted back this council's concerns about possibly raising the 1% property tax cap, and did vote against that measure. However, a strong majority of the pick did vote to recommend up a policy raising, not necessarily eliminating, but raising that 1%. That concludes my
Thank you. Council member Share.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening to members of the viewing public. The council infrastructure committee met on December 2nd. We took up the topic of concurrency under Agenda Bill 6876. This was subsequent to an open house that was held that evening, that was fairly well attended, some good information given out at that time. Much of the information that the committee heard on the concurrency topic was also relayed to the full council at last week's council work session. However, due to some AV difficulties, I'm not sure if all that information's gotten out there, but in a nutshell, there's a fairly large number when it comes to transportation projects that the city will be obligated to pay for under this proposal based on current growth projections. And there's, part of this agenda bill package is to raise the amount of transportation, as well as bike ped impact fees, but there will also be changes to the park impact fees as well, and that will hopefully take care of some of our parks' needs. We have about $47 million there to deal with. So the committee is holding the bill at this time. It's going to be coming back to us at our next meeting for further discussion, at which time we would anticipate relaying it back to the council for action by the full body. We also had a discussion on December 2nd concerning the Route 200 and the future of local transit in our city. The committee favorably looked on the idea of rerouting the 200 to serve the Issaquah Highlands, rather than portions of the north side of I-90, at least in the short term, as a place where it would make sense to increase ridership and efficiency on that route. As we know, the Route 200 has been, in Metro's eyes, a fairly unproductive bus route, and was in fact slated for elimination, but has been given a bit of a reprieve, albeit with some reduced hours. So the committee is looking at ways to make it more efficient, potentially adding other local transit options in the future, finding ways that we can best serve the community through transit. And then, we also briefly touched on complete streets projects, but the committee deferred further discussion on that item pending some potential adjustments with the 2015 budget related to transportation items, so we may take that up at a later time. Additionally, the Eastside Transportation Partnership met last Friday, December 9th. We had a presentation from the Puget Sound Regional Council on different plans. We also had some updates from our legislative committee and our planning committee, and we will be having our much anticipated elections of leadership here at the next ETP meeting. Lastly, the next infrastructure meeting, just mark your calendars, it's going to be Tuesday, January 6th, at 5:30 PM in the Pickering Room of City Hall Northwest. I'll announce that again at our next December council meeting if anything changes. That concludes my reports.
Thank you. Council member Barber.
No report.
Council member Goodman.
No report.
Council president Wintersnight.
Just want to remind the council that council member Share already mentioned currency issues, so I'm really hoping that the infrastructure committee has all that material in advance of next month, next January's council committee work session, where we hope to be able to review that in advance of the regular business. So the current schedule is to bring that back to the full council for action, second business meeting in January. We'll take whatever time is necessary, but I think that's a schedule we can do. And I would ask that all council members, that in advance of the work session in January, that if you have questions or eventually some substantive changes to the concurrency, we get those submitted to the administration in advance of the work session. Actually, sooner the better, so that we can get any type of questions, and all questions and concerns addressed no later than that work session meeting, which will be the second Monday. So, that's looking forward, and so, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. There will be an executive session held this evening to discuss pending litigation and property acquisitions for RCW 42.30.110/1, and RCW 42.30.110/1, and B. The item is expected to take 15 minutes, and no action is anticipated. As a reminder, city offices will be closed December 24th and 25th, and January the 1st. I attended the Puget Sound Regional Council Transportation Policy Board meeting on December 11. We discussed the PSRC draft transportation recommendations through the 2015 legislature. Essentially, that's their legislative agenda, and we received a status of air quality in the Puget Sound region. I also attended the first meeting of the PSRC Subregional Funding Alternatives Working Group to look at the potential for a PSRC regional funding model if a comprehensive statewide transportation package is not passed by the 2015 legislature. And finally, I chaired the Sound Transit Capital Committee on December 11. The committee received an update on the South 200th Main Extension from Sea-Tac to Angel Lake. And with that, that concludes my report. Moving now to the consent calendar, I just would like to point out that there is a Skriptner's error on Agenda Bill 6936, amending the ordinance number 2726, levying general property taxes for 2015, and the Skriptner's error is in the summary of the legislation, describing the legislation, the resolution has the correct figure in it. With that, I would ask if the accounts payable and payroll for December the 15th have been reviewed?
Yes.
And with that, I would ask for the council's pleasure on the consent calendar. Council president Wintersnight.
I move that we adopt the consent calendar as
Good.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Now moving to item number seven on our agenda, the public hearing, Agenda Bill 6930, annexation of Lake Samamish State Park. With that, I would call Trish Honen forward for the staff report on that item.
Hello. The Lake Samamish State Park that we're considering annexing is 380 acres. It's made up of the beaches, the picnic area, and the boat launch, the areas that are not yet within the city. There are four parcels, five if you count the little skinny drainage ditch as the fifth. The cost to the city upon annexation would be an additional $10,000 needed for the King County Sheriff for Shoreline Patrol, unless we decide to get our own boat someday, which might not be a bad idea. But for now, we would just be paying the King County Sheriff's Office for that extra additional shoreline patrol annually. Our current budget is $18,000, and we would just be adding it to, upping it to $28,000 for the annual shoreline patrol. Revenues that we would be getting from these parcels would be $57,000 in annual stormwater fees from this area, based on their impervious surface calculations. We've completed a memorandum of understanding with Washington State Parks that covers our expectations with police service, the addition of lifeguards if they should so choose and want to work with us on lifeguards. It also talks about permitting for the permits that will be coming up in the future for their remodeling, that's really wonderful out there. Are there any questions from you all before the public hearing starts? After the public hearing is when you get to decide whether or not to accept the ordinance that would annex the area, and if that should happen, the effective date would be in February 1st of next year, and it would come in with pre-annexation zoning that you all agreed upon a couple of months ago before we went to the boundary review board.
Are there questions for Trish? Seeing none then, we will move to the formal part of our public hearing. Same guidelines for public participation that I mentioned earlier apply. When recognized, please come to the microphone, state your name, your address, and your relationship to the city, and please limit your comments to five minutes. With that, I would ask if anyone has signed up to speak for the public hearing? Is there anyone in the audience who has not signed up desiring to speak? Anyone desiring to speak? And seeing no one then, the public hearing that opened at 7:15 is closed at 7:16. And with that, are there questions or discussion or motion? Member Goodman.
I would like to. I would move to adopt ordinance number 2731, annexing property commonly known as Lake Samamish State Park, driving the boundaries thereof, providing for the assumption of indebtedness and payment of taxes, establishing zoning for the property to be annexed, providing for severability, fixing the effective date
And moved and seconded, questions or discussion? Council member Share.
A question. There's been some questions raised about the charging of fees going into the state. My understanding is that the annexation doesn't change any of that because ownership of the park will be in the hands of ownership, not the actual jurisdiction. She's nodding yes. So I wanted to just put that out there, because I think the question heard from a couple different sources. You know, well, if it's going to be in the city, then why are we getting a city jurisdiction, but it's still a state? It's a becoming city of Issaquah.
And that is my understanding. Also, in the city attorney, you're pleased with?
Now, with that being said, I refreshed my memory concerning our original vote on this back in September, and I was not in support of moving forward at that time with the annexation because of the zoning issue. And, you know, it's six to one, and I accept the outcome of that, and I'm not going to change anybody's mind on the zoning, but I will again note for the record my concern about doing a designation of two of the parcels as community facilities-facilities, which is defined in our code as extremely broad, in my opinion, encompassing some pretty significant projects which could have significant traffic and other effects on our community. Not to say that we would be necessarily heading in that direction, but I don't see the need for opening even the potential floodgates with that form of zoning for the state park. And so, I was opposed to the zoning at that time. It's already been voted on, it's dealt with. You know, given that, I don't see any issues in terms of just moving forward based on our prior decisions. The growth management board has accepted this. You know, the cost that the city will incur is not in my mind a horrendous cost that we would be set to incur in terms of the $10,000 that was mentioned by Trish. And so, you know, I'm willing to support this this evening, not to be inconsistent with my prior position, but rather to help us move forward constructively with this process, but still noting those concerns and reservations.
Thank you. Are there other questions or comments? Council member Goodman.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is a very exciting day, that we are hopefully and very likely going to approve this. This is one, I think, giant step in the process that's been going on for a long time, to see the glory days come back to Lake Samamish State Park. When I first applied to vacant seat on the council a few years ago, I noted as part of my presentation to the council, my personal desire to have the park, the gem that it was when I moved here late in the 80s, and I would take my small children at the time to the park, and we would play on all the toys that were there. I remember the zip line that used to be there that was so famous and so fun, and now it's not. One again. But this is exciting, not because I had an original idea, people have been working on this. What I found after I was put into the vacant seat was that it resonated with a lot of people, because a lot of the people that heard about the idea to store the park or make the park better, didn't have that experience. They were newer to Issaquah, they hadn't been to the park. I used having Lake Samamish State Park be what it is, which is not what it was, and I firmly not what it could be. Also, in the last couple of years, we've adopted and identified as a very important asset in implementing that plan and making it successful. And so today represents just one very important step in the process, and I'm very, very happy to do so.
Thank you. Other questions or discussion? Council member Marks.
I always feel vaguely bad when we don't necessarily have a lively discussion or a large turnout on an issue, because I feel that folks who are coming to this for the first time may think that there hasn't been a lot of work on this. This issue represents a huge amount of work on the part of staff, coordination with regional agencies, and our partners out there. So, you know, there's been a lot of discussion. Here brought up the issue of the zoning on this, which I had concern. I'm going to support this this evening. My concerns have, many of my concerns have been addressed. I will continue to be interested to see what we consider putting in there. It will be important to me that it, the character of that be part of, when people come over the hill and they see our But I, one of the other reasons why I will be supportive is, we have seen since this conversation started, the growth of Friends of Lake Samamish State Park as an organization. I feel the community is now also providing some of the oversight, some of the feedback in the park to help make sure that it That it will. But very excited and happy to be
I'm very, very happy that you pointed out that this is, that this is something that has been in the works for a long, long time. The council has been involved, and a lot of interaction between our citizens and the council, our various committees and stuff like that. It is nice to see that we perhaps will be closing out our last council meeting of the year, taking action on such an important, vital issue. Council member Barber.
Thank you, Mayor. And I was going to also speak to the comment in regards to the amount of work that has gone into this, and when I first got on this council about nine years ago, I replaced Nancy Davison on the, one of the original studies that we had going, so that was over nine years ago, I've been working on it. And I think we are, we've reached the end, I am so glad. And hopefully, we'll be able to put in tremendous amount of help in the state with some guidance on what's going to be seen in that particular park. Because I remember when this was the place, the place you had to be during the summer with your kids, because it was packed, and it was hard to find a parking spot, and you needed to get there early with all of your water toys, and you spent the entire day there along with all the rest of the kids that were in the schools. So hopefully, we'll be able to help provide some guidance and some finances and bring the state back to that, at least you have to be on that warm summer afternoon in Issaquah. So I'm very excited after a very long time to be able to actually have this completed. Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Council president Wintersnight.
Thank you. Just wanted, I've joined my colleagues in feeling the excitement. It was 30 years ago, when I came to Issaquah and I went to that park, and thought it was a great thing, and I go there today, and it's the same park. And now, now we have an opportunity for the staff and the citizens of Issaquah to develop a deep relationship with the landowners, the state, the State Parks Commission. And, you know, and I know that their direction and desire is in alignment with ours, and that is to help create a sustainable, fun, exciting, very environmentally sensitive, this gem of a place, not only for Issaquah, but And so, if you're thinking big about the city of Issaquah, and as much as we've grown over the years, and things have shifted, this parcel of land into our jurisdiction, this new partnership, our Parks Commission was operating with the park, you know, this is a very big step in history, so it is fitting that it's new at the end of the year, the last piece of action. And it is exciting, so I look forward to celebrating the future with everybody.
Has everyone had an opportunity to comment? And with that, all those in favor of adopting ordinance number 2731, annexing property commonly known as Lake Samamish State Park, describing the boundaries thereof, providing for the assumption of indebtedness and payment of taxes, establishing zoning for the property to be annexed, providing for severability, and fixing the effective date of annexation. Signify by a aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Moving now to Agenda Bill 6893, City Vision, Mission, and Guiding Principles. And Deputy City Administrator Emily Moon for the staff presentation. You're welcome.
Great, thank you. Good evening. I'm here to briefly review some edits that have been made since we last discussed this topic in November. So I'll refresh your memory. In November, we reviewed the city vision, mission, and guiding principles that the senior leadership team had proposed. This is the vision, Issaquah is the best community to invest your future. The mission is the place where we had quite a bit of discussion in this forum in November, and the council members had a variety of suggestions, and asked staff to go back and discuss those suggestions with council leadership, and make some new edits, and offer those up for consideration by the full council. So at a meeting of the council leadership, and then subsequently in a phone call, we drafted this mission. The changes are reflected in your agenda bill. The final edited copy is here on screen, and it reads, "The city of Issaquah engages the public and provides quality services to support a sustainable, safe, and vibrant Language didn't change significantly, but we're hopeful this clarifies the ownership of the mission, and it still uses the key terms that the council seemed to be in agreement of in November. In addition, we worked on depicting the guiding principles in a different way. I've just summarized it here on this slide. Instead of being top to bottom, left to right, we've tried to show that they're equal, and we have pictorial representations for each of those, those haven't changed as well. And none of the subbullets that describe the guiding principles have changed as a result of the conversation with council leadership. Council leadership also asked me, in acknowledgement of the senior leadership team's work on this project, to review the changes to the mission statement, to make sure that staff was okay with those changes, and I'm happy to say that the senior leadership team concurs with those edits. So at this point in time, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Are there questions? Not seeing any questions? Council member Goodman, who was instrumental in getting us to this point. Thank you.
I would move to approve the city vision, mission, and guiding principles as
Moved and seconded, questions? Council member Share.
So a few points, sort of similar to the last item, you know, I didn't support moving this forward back in, I guess, it really had to do with the do with the cost at that time, $5,000, taxpayer money that was for this project. I felt that we could have used that money for more important things and this could have been accomplished without... You know, I mentioned a few comments, reiterate that I brought up at the work session on the record meeting. The, the vision, you know, sometimes I feel like I've got a bit of a different vision for the future of the city than anybody else. But generally, I think we agree on probably about... I still don't quite understand the vision as stated here. It's a little vague. I think I used the example in the work session, you know, if you're a farmer, I doubt Issaquah is the best community to invest your future in. So it's really kind of messaging for certain people that will invest their future in this city, but I don't really know who those certain people are and it doesn't really say in the vision. So I agree that Issaquah is the best community. It's a little self-serving and, you know, pat ourselves on the back. And I agree that it's a great community to invest one's future in. I'm just not sure about the "your" and who we're talking to as our audience. You know, is it businesses? Is it residences? Is it just everybody in the whole region? Come on down and let's grow by another 110% in a decade? I'm not so sure I get behind that. So it's a little vague. And then, you know, on the mission statement, I'm, I'm glad that we made some of those edits. I think the legs of sustainability are very important as part of our core mission that we've always adhered to. I will again bring out the, what I find the extreme irony of talking about public engagement when this was developed without public engagement. It seems like there's, there's a missing piece in terms of deciding the vision and mission of our city without involving the public in that process. So I know that's a lot of negative stuff to, to say off the bat, you know. At the same time, I don't think it's harmful to the city in any way to move forward with this. A lot of work was certainly put in by our leadership team on, on getting this together and I don't want to vote in such a way that denigrates that work in any manner. I do support all the hard work that has been put in on this. So I'll, I'll support moving forward on this mission and vision, although to be honest, I'm personally not sure what it does or what it gets us or what it means, but it's nice to have a mission and a vision statement.
Any additional discussion or questions? President Wintersky.
I'd actually like to ask a question. Emily, perhaps, for Mayor Butler. And share with us how this mission statement will be, will affect planning and the work.
Sure, I can answer that. As we mentioned in November, this will help staff to focus and prioritize. We will have this as our measuring stick when we make decisions to make sure that we are looking at the best possible outcome for safety, sustainability, vibrancy, all of those things that are in our mission statement. The guiding principles, as you know, are a little bit more descriptive. They are action-oriented to a great degree. That also helps to serve as a bit of a work plan for our departments.
Does that help? Well, it's not just for me. I may ask the question really for the benefit of all our listeners. I mean, if you're, you're wondering why we're doing this and what this is and that, and you'll note in the mission, I'll point out, that we'll see and I think there's... And this, and this is, this is the organization that is the city, the mayor and the staff that are all these, including these, you know, that's the capital C represents that organization. And every organization needs to have a very clear purpose for either here and what they're going to do and what are their guiding principles. So I think this is, having this added by the leadership team, reviewed, added by, by council electorate representative, you know, really does make this, coming upon all of us really to use this before it's... And, and, you know, I trust that that's what staff will be doing. With the approval of this, this is what the council will be able to use, as, as you say, as a measuring step, a stick and also, you know, guidance for as we consider different administrative issues or policy question of some, we have a form that we can go back to and hopefully this is a working, living rule that we use to guide us as we make policy and administrative decisions. It's not so, to me, I never viewed this as, I need to read these phrases and understand what they mean. Now, I do know that as we consider future policy visions and big issues for the city, then, you know, one step in that process, we'll be able to hold them up, the guiding principles and the mission as a backdrop. How are we doing it? As we consider options, as we move forward, every year this council does goals, we'll be able to hold up these proposed goals in what's we're looking at this and how do they line up? Are we in alignment? Are we missing something or is, or maybe is this just out of alignment? I think these are very effective tools. We get bogged down, we're using them and spending too much time rewriting them year after year. So I think an occasional review, update going forward is, is always, always needed. My intent to continue to use these as a tool to assess, you know, decisions and policies that the council can take.
The interesting thing about the process that we got everyone together, there's a lot of energy that we discovered we didn't have a mission. We now have a mission. And that mission actually has the council's fingerprints on it coming out, you know, and it was wordsmithed and adjusted and, you know, people say, what's in a, what's in a name, what's in a word? Well, everything. We grappled with a lot of words in this. And Issaquah has been known for its sustainability, the people, prosperity and, and planet. And, and I believe that Issaquah is known for the, the quality of services provided, not only to our citizens, but people that do business here and people that want to do business here. And then to get down to the guiding principles, of which there are 20 of them in, as represented in the circles that you saw up there a little while ago, this does guide the staff and the city and the council and it identifies those things that are important to us, those guiding principles that keep us on the right track and really are a sieve which we run all of our decisions through. Now, each and every one of those might not apply, but a vast number of those will apply. So that's how I see this being used by the administration and our staff going forward. It's a, it's a roadmap.
What else is any comments? Just wanted to make, one thing I forgot to mention too is the, these, especially the guiding principles, they can be challenges as well. Sometimes it's good, and I think there are a few occasions in here where you're reaching beyond where we are right now. So it's somewhat of a statement of, of where we strive to be and so that's, that's how it can be challenged. And I for one, and I, earlier Councilmember Share mentioned about, you know, just interaction, you know, with the public. And I think, I don't believe there's any public agency is as good as they can be. And, and to set that as a goal, then it's a, a coming upon us to understand what we're doing well, what we're not doing well, to continually work on improvement. And that's a very positive thing, just to recognize where we are and we need to make improvement. So I think that's an important element of this mission.
Councilmember Goodman.
I want to thank all the hard work taken on this. I think this was a reasonable way to begin that was... And I did push pretty hard on this for a couple of years and, but it would not have gone anywhere had I not had the support of former council member and city administration who agreed that it needed to be updated. And I really, I participated in vision, mission, exercise with ETP last summer as well. It can be a pretty trying process. I mean, you could really get bogged down on time submitting and try to get, try to get something off the, off the ground. So I do, I do think having somebody that effort is really important, otherwise you might, well, thank you again for...
No comments or discussion? Seeing none then, all those in favor of approving the city vision, mission and guiding principles as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Moving now to our next order of a business is Agenda Bill 6931, election of council president and deputy council president for 2015. Well, typically we elect, the council elects, it's president and deputy council president and, and our first meeting in January. There's been a request since, the council that you see sitting up here will not change in January of next year. This provides an opportunity for council leadership to get a jumpstart on the new year. And so in order to do that, it will require a temporary suspension of the council rules of procedures and that will require a motion. Council President Wintersky.
I move that we temporarily suspend council rules of procedures for election purposes.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Council President Wintersky.
Just add to what Mayor Butler said is that the, to get a jump on next year, what I'd hope would happen is that council committees are formed and the schedules for those can be set and also some other schedules that are, are dependent upon, you know, members who are supposed, who's going to be a leadership win and all of those, the idea would be to set those. We want to take this opportunity and create the window of opportunity for all of those council amendments and those schedules to be set in advance of, of January so people can start off and, right away, without any, that was a, and I did also talk to some past council members who was processing. Maybe even former council member Butler. And it's, it's not an uncommon practice. That was one of the reasons we...
Hey, so we have approved the suspension of rules. I will now call for nominations for council... Well, why don't we vote on that? All those in favor of suspending the council rules to, so that we can elect our president and deputy council, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Well, I will now call for nominations for council president. The member Mars.
For the second year in a row, we've just recently finished a process where Paul Wintersky has masterfully balanced a number of competing important issues to lead us through to, to a good budget. And for that and many, many other reasons, it's my great privilege to renominate Paul Wintersky for Issaquah City Council.
Nominations in?
They do not. Are there any other nominations for... There are none. I would suggest that...
Move to close nomination.
Say. Seconded, all those in favor of closing nominations, signify by saying aye. Before we vote on our council president for next year, the nominee, is any comments that he would like make to your colleagues? Now would be a good time to, to do it.
Well, thank you, Mayor Butler. It would be a good idea that people, prior to casting a vote on someone for office, have an idea of what they'd be voting for and, and I appreciate the reference to what we've done in 2014. I wanted to make some comments, really, you know, yeah, so what, if I vote for Paul, what is he going to do next year? And really, the, my message to my colleagues on the council is really want to continue and build upon what, what we started this year. I think the, my driving purpose is really to give the citizens of Issaquah the most effective legislative body that we can. And I think the city and our region has grown quite a bit and evolved quite a bit over the years and it's going to continue to grow too. So I think our citizens deserve the best possible unity and effective government and also, you know, position within the region that we deserve. And I think this, no political body has more power and more duty and responsibility than this legislative body, the council. And so it, what drives me is to consider and evaluate ways, you know, that we can continue to be the most effective council that we can be. And I think that includes, you know, how we work together. I think that by being very inclusive, I made it a policy this year to always include the deputy president in all, all discussions and meetings, wherever that was feasible. And also to be very collaborative as the chair of the work session meetings. I think it's very important, I hope you've seen that when we're discussing issues and it's the opportunity for people to be heard and, and to be responded to in a respectful way. You know, that type of, of those, of those meetings is important and I intend to continue that. And, and one of the real key items that's in front of us this coming year, it's one of our goals that we adopted, is the, is the start work on the master mobility plan. And as, and which is, especially in light of the currency issue that we are now reviewing, I think it's certainly clear to me that the timing for developing a master mobility plan and working with staff on that is, is going to be very critical, very, very critical. I see that as, as one of the, you know, the top issue for 2015. So I would really look forward to, I think that's the type of issue that'll go through our committee, but also probably through work sessions for the entire committee where we want to always give every council member an opportunity, all seven council members an opportunity to form the policy before it goes in front of the full council for regular action. And so that would be one area of real importance. Another area would be, you know, in 2014, we tweaked the goal setting process a little bit and we got some really good feedback on things that worked and some opportunities for improvement. And I look forward to, to actually continuing what the basis of what we did there. I think that, including in building upon and improving last year's successful online citizen survey, I think we'd never done that before as far as council goal setting and we, we learned from that and we can, we can continue that and we can improve upon that. One of the things we died, I gave, I'm giving heads up to the administration this evening as well, is like, we introduced, we asked the council, or excuse me, the administration to give us a report on emerging issues during the goal setting process. And I would be asking that the, that the administration provide their report on emerging issues in the, no later than the end of February this year, which is prior to the time that we actually do the formation of our actual proposed goals. And one of the also major issues that we talked about in goal setting and in that feedback session, there's, it's on certain, you know, what goals are going to get, you know, how we're going to vote on them, how are we going to decide what is a goal and what isn't. That's a, that's a key practice of our goal setting that I'm looking to and want to improve upon. And I've, I've been thinking about that quite a bit and realized the way that we deliberate topics during the budget, when we had a list of things that we wanted to consider, we went around and we all heard everybody's view on those issues and then one by one we voted on them. And I think that's the basis, that's a framework that we can bring to goal setting as well and be less arbitrary in the number that we actually accept. And, and I know also one of the key things for goal setting has been the schedule. So, you know, my goal to bring the goal setting would be by the end of March, is that this council, every one of us makes, does actually submit our proposed goals by the end of April. The administration has given their response, including the proposed budget, and that we, and a date certain in May, perhaps the last weekend in May, that we actually have our goal setting session at a location somewhere here in Issaquah. goal setting session at a location somewhere here in Izquah. So, that would be, if I bring nothing else to this council in 2015, it's getting a goal retreat location in Izquah. So, I mean, so that's just some things that we would be looking at. And another key aspect for me in this role is that, you know, as I mentioned earlier about being the most effective council as possible, is that, and that includes really achieving the best possible results for Izquah through our participation in regional committees. And we've informally done quite a bit, I think, Councilmember Mars, I applaud the work that you've done recently in bringing the issues from the Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee to us. Those are major policy issues, and this full council had an opportunity to discuss and give you feedback. And I know and I feel strongly that Izquah was well represented during that process. And there are other, either local and wider regional committees and issues similarly, some that deal with budget issues very importantly, and so, that process of being aware of those regional issues that affect our policy and our budget, and getting those in front of this council for deliberation, and give guidance back to our committee representatives, so that they can represent, you know, this council on those committees, that's a process I want, I look to further refine and really standardize upon. And I think, I think that's very critical for our role within the region, you know, that this council works that way. Those are just some of the highlights, you know, I think the budget process that we've gone through, that we just completed, is another example of, of I think, an improved process, especially in the collaboration and the administration's understanding of where we stand as a council and the preparation of that draft original proposed budget, and so looking at opportunities to improve that and to make that a more effective and efficient process for everybody is another objective that I would have. Those are just the highlights. It's been an honor to serve this past year. It's quite a commitment, every Wednesday. And sometimes there are emails that nobody else gets that I have to respond to, or the president has to respond to, and so, but I accept those duties gladly, and I appreciate the support from my council members, the work that I've done this past year and the work I hope to do next year. Thank you.
Okay, so, all those in favor of council president, Witterstein's continuation as council president for 2015, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Well, congratulations, that was a unanimous vote. Now, moving to deputy council president. I will now call for nominations for deputy council president. The member Polly.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Stacy Goodman for deputy council.
Yes, I would like to move to close nominations for deputy council president.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all those, is there any discussion? All those in favor of closing nominations, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I would offer the nominee an opportunity to address, please, if he would like.
Thank you. I first want to say that it's been the past year working closely with Paul, and I want you to know, if you can't already, that you have in Paul an extraordinarily thoughtful, rightful, dedicated council member and council president. He is constantly considering what is best for this community, and he's also constantly considering how this council can do the best job it can for the community on how this can act most efficiently, so that we can, very impressed. And I just wanted to say that is what has worked with him all year long. And as Paul mentioned, we had some goals for 2014 as a leadership for council, and we got together early on in the year and discussed goals that we wanted to accomplish this year. And as he already mentioned, one of those was revising the council's annual goal setting process, and that we worked pretty hard on and took very seriously, and based on the feedback we got, I probably can speak for both of us in saying that, you know, we were happy with the success that we had with that process, but there's always room for improvement. And one of the, one of the, the goals, I shouldn't say goal, but one of the goals that I would have for next year for revising that process and refining it even a little further, has to do with what Paul referred to, and that was the emerging issues that the administration had come forward with. And they did come forward with a great, long, daunting list of emerging issues, and I recall some of the comments afterwards were, they were all great, but what do I, what do I do with that list? It was very long. One of the things that I would like to ask or challenge the administration to do when they come forward with that list, is to come forward with maybe that list, not only as a list of emerging issues, but suggested goals, to help, help start our thoughts, to help start the conversation. Because I don't know about the rest of my fellow council members, but I don't run a city, and that's not my expertise, and so from the inside, what are their ideas about what our goals could be? I would like to see if they could, that list, and with suggested goals. So that's one of the ideas that I have that I would, I would work on very early this year. We also had a list, we also have a lot of feedback from council members and from staff, as Paul mentioned, that is that we could maybe make the setting process more refined, and so I'd be looking forward to working on that and continuing to build on what we started last year. One of the goals that we had that we didn't quite get to was to update the council handbook is probably, I don't know how long it's been since it has been updated, but it's been a long time, and it needs some significant revisions, and we didn't quite get that tackled this year because it was November before we had time to do that, to start looking at it. And so, we decided that we would leave that to next year's leadership, and I would be happy to be involved next year. And the other thing, too, that we discuss quite a lot, is ensuring that the council has sufficient information and sufficient time to make sure that we can make the best policy decisions possible. And although that might seem like sort of an obvious responsibility that council leadership might have, and it is sort of an obvious responsibility, but what it really means is that we are very thoughtful as we review agendas, and listening to fellow colleagues' concerns, and adjusting at various schedules if necessary, for that we are in a position to make the best policy decisions that we have, or just kind of building on being better. And some of those things are behind the scenes, but we are constantly trying to think of new ways to make a better process. I think those are the highlights of the goals that we had in mind this year, and the highlights of items that we'd like to continue building on next year. Paul mentioned a couple elegants. One of them was regional representation, which is very important as well. We've had an ongoing dialogue with the administration, and are thinking of ways to make that better. And I would be happy to recommit myself this year because it's been a pleasure working with Paul, and it's been a pleasure working more closely with him.
And thank you. I was actually supposed to ask for a show of hands on the vote for council president. Obviously, but, all those in favor of Councilmember Goodman to be our deputy council president for 2015, am I raising your hand? And that is, you, that is a unanimous vote. Okay, so, that concludes our business items for this afternoon. Moving now to good of the order. Does anyone have anything for good of the order this evening? Seeing none, then, we will now move into executive session. The purpose of the executive session is to discuss pending litigation and property acquisitions for RCW 42.30.110, per N1, per N I, and RCW 42.30.110, per N1, per N B. The executive session is expected to take 15 minutes, and no action is anticipated. We are now moving into executive session.